All right.
All right, are we ready to get started then?
I think so.
Yes.
All right. Our apologies for the delay, but I appreciate everyone trying to help out there. So I think we're gonna begin our meeting tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent, so the next item on our agenda for this evening is officer elections. I think it includes President, Vice President, Treasurer, and Secretary. Do I hear a motion for nomination?
Yes, I move that Echo Schneider be the President. Diana Brazil, Vice President. Myself, John Garrity, Treasurer. And Janice, Reunion Secretary, so there's no real change there. That's the motion.
Okay, second.
Second, thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion?
No.
No.
No discussion?
No.
No discussion.
All right, we'll move to a roll call vote. Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right.
Consent.
Oh, so now we move on to the consent agenda?
Do we want to just acknowledge that Diana would run the meeting if that's what the plan is since Echo is by phone?
Yeah.
Just kind of state what we're doing?
If that's helpful.
Do we need to do it on a motion?
I don't think so, I think just acknowledge it out loud.
I'll just put it in the minutes that since she's by phone that the Vice President will run the meeting for the rest of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I'll run the meeting for the rest of the meeting. I'm gonna muddle through as best I can here.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, next on the, next on here is the consent agenda. Including the minutes from the October 22nd, both meetings, a closed session and open meeting, financial reports and the report of the Executive Director. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's moved.
Okay, there's a motion from Janice. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's vote. See, I guess I don't. Do I vote or not?
You don't, unless there's a tie.
Okay, so Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Aye.
And then Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next on the agenda, there are no administrative highlights, so next is public comments, of which we have a small, now we've got two. And Alina, you're up. And then Juanita, you're right after Alina.
This evening, I want to address the issue of censorship. We have all experienced censorship over the last few years. From social media posts marked as disinformation, to filtered search results that filter out unacceptable narratives, to podcasters whose channels were removed from YouTube just for refusing to lie to their audiences. That is censorship. Political censorship is real. Being doxxed is real and being canceled is real. And ironically, some of the same people who yelled the loudest about misinformation and called for censorship of opposing voices are the same people who oppose library boards and school boards that reflect the will of the people. The premise of what constitutes censorship and book banning should be questioned. In an article published in The Hill, Jeffrey M. McCall writes, "The reality is that the so-called banned books listed by the ALA and Penn America are still widely available for purchase and in countless libraries around the country. Parents who want their kids exposed to certain kinds of sexualized or cultural messages can still acquire those books and read them to their kids as bedtime stories. They just don't have the right to have the taxpayer money of schools and public libraries used to put that content in front of other people's kids and attempt to shut up opposing voices." McCall is exactly right. How can a book be considered banned because of a sticker or where it's shelved when it can also still be purchased or borrowed countless other ways? If someone is supposedly banning these books, they're obviously doing a terrible job. These books are still available to anyone who actually wants them. They're even put on display advertising that they are supposedly banned during Banned Books Week. So which is it, are they banned or not? But returning to the issue of real censorship, local independent media who have attempted to share information about our library on Facebook have actually had their links removed, their pages banned, and have continuously been censored for violating community standards. Isn't that censorship? The Hill article goes on to say, "Discretion in the selection process of kids' books is not the same as banning. Selection decisions are made all the time by professional educators and librarians, and most of those decisions are made sensibly and meet the needs of the communities they serve. But the selectors are not infallible and aren't entitled to have the final say in all situations." He goes on to say, "Demonizing concerned parents as extremist book banners and lumping them in with the various despots who really did ban books does harm to the rhetorical sphere. We obviously saw this divisive language at the last meeting by former leadership of the board, and it was absolutely uncalled for." Lastly, McCall writes about intentional mischaracterization concerning curation of material available to our youth. He says, "Curation means some materials get included and some don't. The materials left out are not being banned, and the national dialogue would be enhanced by that realization. Thank you to the board for not censoring community discussion. This is what free speech looks like."
Juanita, you're up.
Big change has come. On November 5th, there was a political and cultural earthquake, a shift that caught many unaware. But many of us were not surprised at all, we saw it coming. Anyone who's been sitting through these library meetings saw the beginnings of this battle brewing two years ago. A standoff between a big institution and the will of the people. A political pendulum has swung nationally on November 5th, and it needs identified. The last couple of weeks, I've been mesmerized watching people across the nation going into full meltdown mode, paralyzed and completely disillusioned. The latest victims of the false polls and manipulative reporting of the mainstream media. As of Friday afternoon, it was being reported that CNN's dwindling viewership is down 40% from before the election, and they are beginning firings and layoffs, including longtime show host Anderson Cooper. MSNBC is down 50%, and it's being reported that Comcast is trying to sell the failing news network. So what would spark this dramatic turn of events? Their audience discovered that they were being lied to, like I and many others in this room discovered four years ago. Folks, we've all been propagandized and lied to, simply put, we've been played. Most of these big news organizations, both liberal and conservative, are owned by the same people. They are partisan actors, setting up battles between us. We're just their cash cows. Whether those involved know what they're doing or not, they're part of Marxist infiltration and indoctrination that started decades ago and is spread throughout news and social media, Hollywood, education, and both government and privately owned institutions. Marxism at its core seeks to divide groups and classes of people to achieve power. Through inflammatory divisive rhetoric, Marxists create both villain classes and marginalized victim classes, and then encourage hatred between them. All the while, Marxists pretend to be the fair arbiters, when really, they take the side of the marginalized victims which they have created through constantly repeated talking points. This is what has taken hold of our culture and our big institutions, unfortunately including public libraries. Two years ago, the quiet part was spoken out loud when a newly appointed American Library Association President named Emily Drabinsky announced her presidency and her status as a Marxist at the same time on a social media post. Of course, when she realized that the mask had slipped, she took the post down. But we saw the truth. And after sitting through a library meeting or two, it doesn't take long to figure out who are being portrayed as the victims and who are being set up as the villains. But you know what? I'm full of hope. On November 5th, the nation realized something that we already know. Despite what we were being told, we are the majority, and eyes are being opened. I thank God for positive changes that are coming locally and nationally, and I pray that all of us, all the library patrons, can find what they want and enjoy it in their library. Last, I want to say thank you to the board. God bless you for listening to the people.
All right, and then I guess we move on to old business. First thing is resource sharing software update.
Yes. So first, I wanted to, while we're talking about resource sharing, just talk about Mobius and my presence on the board, since that's what we even talked about. Echo specifically had asked me to address that in a meeting, since it has come up from one of the public commenters. So I do serve on the Mobius board. Mobius is a membership-based organization. The members are libraries and the services provided are for libraries. It's a nonprofit organization governed by members, similar to other entities in library and nonprofit industries. As a member institution, we have a vote on many Mobius decisions. The membership of Mobius Alexa Board, which has some decision-making authority and is required by laws governing nonprofits. My role as a voting member and as a board member is not for personal interest, it's to represent Christian County Library and its interests. I'm only eligible to serve on the board because Christian County Library is a member library. It's a benefit to the library for me to be on the board. I don't receive any compensation for it, and I fill out all relevant Missouri Ethics Commission disclosures for both entities. My role on the board is in compliance with our conflict of interest policy, including the section related to my voting interest, which defines my voting activities for Mobius, not for the library. And in matters pertaining to financial impacts specific to the library and not the entirety of the membership, I do recuse myself from voting on the Mobius board. So that address what your concerns were as far as community confusion?
Yeah, I think it's one of them. The other one was, we wanted to entertain the idea, I guess it would go in new business for the next meeting, the idea of there would be a software selection committee where we have like a subcommittee that would evaluate all of the functional criteria and kind of do a KT analysis and then make a recommendation back to the board. So a subcommittee to do that. We can put it forward, but I think that's...
I have some questions, but I can follow up with that, or we can just talk about it next month. So my next piece of this software update is about Mobius specifically, and kind of where that migration process is. So the latest round of testing saw some good success. So actually, the developer is wanting us to go into the production environment. So I want to see a little bit more success before we do that, but in the next couple of weeks, we'll be having some conversation about what that looks like and if we could maybe do a soft launch and do some testing with staff live, but not for the public necessarily yet, so we can see if it is working enough to go live. The development is continuing. There's one feature that we were really hoping that would be developed before we went live, and they have told me that that development is done. But they're not, they're rolling it out in January because, so they're making it work with three different kinds of software, and it's working with two of them, but not the third, and they need to do an update, excuse me, for the third. So if we were to go live or do some kind of a soft launch in December, which I'm not guaranteeing or promising that we would, but that is maybe a possibility, that would give us some time, and then hopefully they would roll that out, that development out in January. And that functionality is the ability to place holds on items that are already checked out or on hold, which is, which was available in the previous Mobius software, but it's just, it took a little bit longer to develop in this one. There are still holds that can be placed on items that are not currently checked out, that is currently live and functioning. So that's kind of that update. So hopefully, next month, I will have more and good news and more concrete, like if we could go live for the public with the Mobius. And then the third piece of this is what I talked about last month, which was kind of an alternative configuration using our OCLC, traditional interlibrary loan software, and kind of improving or optimizing our configuration with that. So we did, of course, run into some hiccups with the configuration, where we were initially told we could do what I had envisioned, and then told we would need a separate piece for patron authentication, and that would be an additional cost. So I kind of went round and round with a couple people, and finally got, actually just this afternoon, got, they did say we don't actually need to have it, but they're trying to figure out which functionality for sure we do and don't have without paying for an additional piece. So trying to figure that out. My hope is, we have one piece of that, which is just a catalog of materials, OCLC, and that is, has millions of items in it. We can make that live for the public and hope to in the next week or so, where they can find materials. We are hoping to make it to where they can just request live from there. But until we nail down that authentication piece, they will still have to like take that information and put it in a separate form. So it's kind of half of what I was hoping it to be, but we'll still keep working on that process. And again, next month, I will have hopefully more updates about that. Whether or not we do kind of both, like if we're able to go live with Mobius in a month or two, we can still do this other OCLC piece, and it might be good to have both in tandem until we're confident in Mobius's fully charged functioning. So those are updates there. Do you have questions about that? I know that's a lot of detail about the software.
Have we received the refund?
It's, the check is in the mail, I've been told. They did cut the check this week, so we should receive it next week.
I'd like to hear when that it's reported. John's suggestion of software selection committee. We have more information on Mobius, we have more information on the OCLC, and we have a packet on Evergreen. So it'll be helpful to hear what you have to offer next month.
Okay.
All right. Okay, next item on the agenda, legal counsel RFP responses. We've got two proposals. We've got one from Robert Petrowski, is that right?
Petrowski.
Petrowski, I'm not sure how to say his name. Of the Ellis Ellis Hammond and Johnson firm. And then we got a proposal from Rich Wenders of Relentless Gold. Any discussion about that?
I have some, and I don't know either of these people, but I read through all the material. I found some differences. Like I say, I don't know these people, so, but some of the differences I noted. It bothered me that Mr. Petrowski was late in delivering his proposal. I didn't think that boded well for a firm. I noticed that a lot of the material he referred to was all the people in the firm, and we aren't at the expense of hiring a firm versus an individual lawyer is, you know, just the baseline cost. The needs of the wanting to charge for communications, for all communications, paperwork, copies, travel. There were so many small charges that were going to be added on that seemed a bit excessive. Now, the other firm was not uncostly, but it was not as nitpicky in all the different little things it was going to bill for. And the, and it also came in a couple days before the deadline. My happiness was that was, as a library, we have to budget for legal services. And if you have one company that's gonna, you know, maybe have six or seven different things that they, you know, might be budgeting for another one that is more succinct, just practically, that would be an easier item to budget. Both of these are so much more than what we had been budgeted for, but it needs must. The other thing I noticed, is it Mr. Winder? Winder, Winder?
Wenders.
Yeah, Wenders, thank you. Thank you. There, although they do have two people in the firm and two paralegals, the experience specifically of the people with municipal work, with cities, counties, entities in our area, and entities that were more similar to what we are, the experience in the towns and local governments, it just, it seemed to me that they were more suited to understand the needs of our library versus, Mr. Petrowski has an incredible references and experience, but it was in much larger corporations. And then I go back to the cost. Wenders was about a third less of the first proposal, which again is still many thousand more than we had budgeted previously in our yearly budget for legal services. But on that basis and on the local experience that that company had, I preferred the proposal for Mr. Wenders as the attorney rather than for Mr. Petrowski.
What do you think, John?
I have a different opinion. I spoke to both gentlemen for about 30, 40 minutes, and I was quite impressed with both of them. I think either one of them would probably be able to handle the work. But based on the strength of the firm, I also did some asking around. I went to their website, and the proposal, even though it was late, I asked Robert what happened, and he had, he was actually coming back from a funeral. He had a death in the family. So, I mean, those things happen. He, I think it was 30 minutes late, something like that. So although I do see that they are slightly more expensive, their depth and breadth is much more impressive. And I would probably go with E, H, and J, Ellis Ellis Hammond and Johnson, for that reason. I think they're just a stronger law firm. They have the ability to handle it, and that's who I'd go with.
I tend to agree with John. Again, I agree that probably either Rich or Robert could handle the day-to-day stuff. And I do note that Robert's firm is, their hourly rate is higher. I think when you get down to what Ellis Ellis Hammond and Johnson is proposing in their billing, that's pretty typical for law firm billing. I mean, in my, in my own practice, you know, in my fee agreements, I bill by the tenth of an hour. I have an hourly rate, and I charge expenses back to the client. You know, I generally don't charge for mileage, but if I have to FedEx something, if I have to send something certified mail, if I have a big copy job, I bill that back to the client because otherwise that's money out of my pocket. So that's not unusual, and I would imagine that that's something that Rich would probably do as well. And I think for, probably for most day-to-day things, you know, it's just gonna be billed by the hour, and if it's just a contract review or something, that's gonna be a point however many hours to review this or that contract and tweak it. So probably, other than the proportional difference in the hourly rate, I don't know that it's probably gonna be that much higher. When we had Harry as counsel, I know that his agreement was $500 a month, but I never, never could quite figure out when that went to hourly and what was within his flat fee. So I, again, I think if we have something, and I hope we don't, if we have some issue that blows up, I think Ellis Ellis Hammond and Johnson would be probably be better equipped to handle it.
What you're looking at, to use Harry as an example, there was a budget of $6,000 with a few thousand set aside for extreme urgency. We did not, you know, the library usually does not come across that, and it's not anything that yourself, a competent lawyer, you know, someone who is in this area could handle. We're looking at a lot of money here, and we're looking, this is a big change on the budget. And that really concerns me, bottom line, for the library's budget. I understand your, you guys' comments, I really do. But if it came down to the two of them, I would say for the taxpayers' money and for using it competently, we argue about that with so many other issues. We're going to be looking into the selection committee for the resource software. We're looking into all these different things, and money is a very important issue. And so I just would hold fast, for nothing else, for that reason, for the sake of the library and the budget, to keep that in mind.
Okay. Echo, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I also had a hard time understanding with sort of the comparison to our current state where we have a set flat rate, and I am unaware of how often we went above that rate to compare between the two, of our expectations and what would be in the standard month-over-month surfaces, those sorts of things. So I wasn't able to compare against what we have currently, but based on the two candidates, and you see the value of the strength of the firm for Mr. Petrowski, and I think that, and again, both of them seem like they would be excellent candidates. So I'm pleased that we have choices.
So do we have a motion as to who to hire?
I move that we hire Peter Petrowski at Ellis Ellis Hammond and Johnson.
In a second?
In a second.
Okay, in a second, okay. Okay, Trustee, well, I guess, okay, do I vote if I'm?
No.
Okay.
You can take discussion on the motion.
Okay, take discussion on, any further discussion? I think we've already discussed it. Okay, Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Nay, and I would like it noted in the minutes that my concern is the financial cost for the library, and I would like that to be very carefully monitored.
Okay. Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
Okay, two to one. Okay, so we're hiring Ellis Ellis Hammond and Johnson and Robert Petrowski specifically. All right. Okay, the next up is, and actually, Renee, did I kind of gloss over the report of the Executive Director a while ago? Should I?
No, that's in the consent.
That's in the consent, yeah, okay. I didn't want to, you had it in the materials, and I thought you wanted to talk about it.
Just trying to ignore.
Yeah, I didn't want you to think I was trying to ignore you. Okay, new business, okay, next up is bylaws revision. John, you want to tell us about that?
Yeah, so we're gonna start with Article 5, Order of Business. Some small changes on that one.
Okay, is this the?
This is Article 5, Order of Business. So, and I think we're doing much better in terms of getting things out earlier, and I'm very grateful for that. I just wanted to put it in Section 1 that we have seven days prior to the meeting, so that there's time to review and make edits. And we know there's gonna be last-minute things, and those, you know, if no fault of anybody, we have to make a change to the agenda, then we can do that. But we can do that prior to the 24-hour notice to the public. But I'd like to have the packet seven days out. There is a state guideline already that kind of says you're supposed to do that anyway. It's not statute, but it is a guideline, so I'd like to have that changed. The changes that I'm asking for, the additions are in green, the deletions are in red with strikeout. The other thing I'd like to have is, I'd like the board to have more control over what goes on the agenda. Sometimes we have a really full agenda, sometimes we have a really small agenda. I think we need to do this in coordination with the Executive Director, but the final approval should come from the board president, and that's kind of what we've changed it to, the approval.
Have you ever been denied having something on the agenda that you have wanted to add on the agenda? I mean, this sounds kind of dictatorial, that she has to have the approval from us. And I'm not, I'm not quibbling with your point, but has that ever been an issue?
Yeah.
That's been an issue.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we've had that.
When has that been an issue?
For a prior meeting, I had requested I be added to the agenda in advance of 24 hours and was denied having those added.
That was for a closed meeting, and they didn't meet the criteria for being in a closed meeting.
We just don't want to quibble about it, we want to be able to...
Well, no, but that's not a quibble, that's a distinction, a closed meeting versus an opening meeting. There are different rules.
So who would have the final authority on approval for agenda? Who should have that then?
The President has always had that. I have always gone by what the President wants.
Okay, so we'll just have that, state that in Section 1, that the President has the final approval. The other two are just the new business and the Pledge of Allegiance. We're already kind of doing that, so it's kind of an administrative change.
So my question about having the packet ready, like this is gonna be dependent upon you because this kind of stuff should be in the packet, this shouldn't be brought to the meeting. The trustees should all have a chance to review this kind of information, and I should have it too, so that I can bring relevant materials to it.
So that means we will all...
So that means we will all be held to account to make sure we have all of our needs, concerns, and papers presented for the agenda seven days prior with no changes seven days prior to the meeting?
It says in coordination with the executive director. So I think the things that, this is just me thinking out loud, tell me if we need to say this differently. If the executive director wants to talk about things in the board meeting, then those things should be available to us early enough so that we can speak to him and vote to him, that's all.
Right. But if you, if the trustees want to talk about things, all of the trustees should have all of the information too.
I disagree. So the problem with that is if I render my notes and what I want to do too early, I could be guilty of a sunshine law violation. So I don't want to politic for what, like, these bylaw changes, for example. If I put those out, I'm basically saying, this is what I want to do, come along with me. I don't want to politic for that, and I want to discuss that here. So this is a fresh discussion, these bylaw changes. It's not a discussion, we're going to have an email. It's, I'm not going to present it in email. This is something we do in a public forum. So that's different.
So typically, it would be sending that proposed changes to me, and then I disseminate with the packet. There's not discussion about it, but people, other trustees, have a chance to read those proposals and then have a media discussion about it in the meeting.
Right.
So that you're not, like, trying to make a decision about something that you've just seen, especially if it's any length, to be able to read through it all.
Right. I think if there's, like, these RFPs, this was something that took a bit to get through, that's fine, we can get those out early, but.
Right, and you have those, have had those since Friday.
No, I'm not saying they weren't there, but what I'm saying is, I don't think it's a two-way street. The difference between a paid worker and someone who's doing this volunteer on their own time, some of us don't have a lot of time to review and request changes, so I think the onus falls on your side to get that stuff to us early, so we have time to review it. Otherwise, I'm inclined to just want to table things till the next meeting, till I have time to review. That's already happened to me once. I just, I don't want to do that, you know, like, to have it early so that I can.
I can back up what I do, like, it'll take a little bit of adjustment, especially in the next month, because we have kind of a cycle of things, but that's about three days sooner than I typically do, which is fine. But what I'm saying is that I think that anything that is going to be on the agenda, even if it's something one of the trustees are proposing, needs to be sent to me by that time, so I can include it in that packet.
I don't think she should be held accountable to have everything seven days prior to the meeting and us not be held accountable to have things seven days prior to meeting. I think it has that ruling, that request would need to be for all of us concerned.
I disagree, but I'm open to the thought. If you have questions about what I'm thinking, I mean, I gave you the agenda, I have plenty of time to know that that's what we're going to talk about. I don't think it's a packet, it's edits.
Well, the proposals is what should go in the packet. Especially for bylaws, I will say that, because we have a specific way to update them. So now we're in this gray area of, like, is this what we vote on next month, or do we bring the proposed thing with edits next month and then vote on it in the following meeting?
Yeah, that's a tough one, Tori. I know it takes two full meetings to get a bylaw change in, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think what you're saying about feeling ambushed in some ways by not having enough time just because you haven't had time to review the packet a few days in advance, I mean, I'm assuming not all the trustees have seen all these in advance.
No, this was our first viewing.
Right. So if that's the case, then they're all seeing it for the first time today and have to make a snap decision today. So they're in the same place that you were saying you were with materials from the executive director, so it would just be for everybody to be able to have time to review anything that's happening in the meeting. That's certainly what we've done in the past.
So I mean, if we consider these changes now, we vote next meeting, right? Or do we vote this meeting?
I mean, it has to be submitted in writing at the meeting, and, for example, like, let's say Janice and Diana haven't seen them, like they said, so if they haven't seen them, then if they need some time to think about it, they could very reasonably say, I do not, I need to have some time to look at this, I'm just seeing this today. It wasn't in the packet like the other. So if Renee and I were suggesting bylaw changes, which we've done multiple times, if we needed to change the, you know, then we would put those in, so you had plenty of time to review them in advance of the meeting. So I don't, I see the point.
And I think setting the agenda, like, we, the last few months, the agenda hasn't been set until even before seven days prior. So I have, you know, regular things that we do, financial reports and my report and stuff, that won't be a problem to back up a few days, but depending upon what you put on the agenda, then I have to scramble, you know, to get something in a day, like, we almost need to set the agenda like two weeks before the meeting then, and then it doesn't have as much flexibility if something comes up. So, because if you guys put something on the agenda that I need to prepare something for, then I don't have time to get it ready for seven days before the meeting.
So maybe it should be that to try, to add the words, to try, to offer the information seven days prior to the meeting, knowing there may be a few exceptions because of the business of the library, so that we have the majority of the information seven days prior, knowing that there may be a few new things that would have to be looked at at the time of the meeting. I'm trying to make this flexible that, yes, I agree with you. I come early, and I sit and hide someplace for an hour and a half, and I read through and look at everything, and I, or I come the day or two before, or on Saturday before, to pick up the packet. But there may be some things for us as well as for the library that just can't be offered that soon.
I think it's fair that if the board puts something on the agenda that requires something of you, that's fair that you get more notice, but I don't think.
Like, for the regular items, for the regular items, like financial reports, my report, anything that's in our regular rotation, like, that's not a problem, and I can do that a few extra days. So maybe we just change that to, like, for, like, a packet for regular items or something like that, that just makes clear that, or routine items are ready seven days in advance.
Renee? The financials will be much more estimates.
Yes, that's right, because we do, yeah. So the adjustment report each month will not look as close as they typically are, because we're doing it several days early.
I would also offer that sometimes we've had to set a meeting 24 hours. I mean, the law requires, the law allows you to set a meeting 24 hours in advance, and occasionally we've had an emergency situation where we needed to set a meeting 48 hours later. So that would automatically violate this if it's a rigid seven days every time, right, if there's packet materials.
So maybe we should say, and I did toil with that, so maybe we should say, regular meetings.
Yes.
That fixes that problem, and then.
For each regular meeting?
Yeah, where it's got.
For each regular meeting.
Okay.
And how do we phrase routine, the normal routine?
Routine business items?
Agenda items?
Yes. And packet for routine items for each meeting. How about packet for routine items for each meeting?
Where is that?
Okay.
Second for, okay, four routine items?
The library's executive director or designee shall be held responsible for preparing an agenda of business and a packet of materials. Do we want just?
Of routine materials?
I guess we've got to define what routine materials is.
I mean, right, that, it gets quite complicated.
I mean, the things in the agenda that are always included, like minutes, financial report, reporting to the executive director.
Well, maybe we talk about the ones that are, like, the most frightening to me, like, the financial report, is that seven days, can we do that?
We can.
But Mary just said.
It's an estimate.
As long as you understand that it would be more estimates than actual for the next month's bills.
So we say, financial.
Wish that'll ultimately kind of catch up a little bit.
Diana, are you trying to write down the actual?
I am, but I don't know how much I'm succeeding.
Because if this is the meeting and the next one is the second, we have to have it kind of in writing, I'm trying to, but I don't, I can't just get it from the video and have that count as a two-meeting.
Get it written up.
I'm going to get it, I'm going to get it right now.
Okay.
A packet of financial and, so I don't know if this is a legal term, but.
Financial reports, minutes. Executive director report, should we put that in there too?
That's just the consent agenda, maybe?
Yeah, basically, the consent agenda, is that's what, it's the consent agenda is the same thing every time, isn't it?
It is.
Okay. So maybe just, and packet for the consent agenda?
Is that pretty consistent, the consent agenda? So let's just say that then.
Okay.
And you guys can always choose to add or take away things from the consent agenda too.
That sounds good, and we'd have time to do so.
Yeah, okay.
Because we'd have time to review and make edits, so that.
Okay, so let me read it again so that we can make it motion-ready. The library's executive director or designee shall be held responsible for preparing the agenda of business and packet of consent agenda items for each regular meeting and send it to the library and board of members at least seven days prior to the meeting, so that there's time to review. Everything else stays the same, we're adding approval, and we're striking out consultation. Do you want me to give this to you?
I have this one, I think, I think.
In preparing the agenda, the executive director shall obtain the approval of the president or designee of the board of trustees before publicly posting notice?
Yes. That part, I think, is pretty self-explanatory. I think we had it that way before, but it wasn't, I don't think it was definitive enough.
Okay, and then in Section Two, we're just adding Pledge of Allegiance and new business to the.
New business, yes. It isn't in the bylaws now, but we always do it, I don't know why it isn't in the bylaws.
Okay.
And then Pledge of Allegiance, of course, is new. So.
And you're leaving in the not limited to, right? You're leaving in the shall include, but I think it just was not limited to, so you could always add in new things.
Right.
The agenda doesn't leave that in, yeah.
So I move that we accept these edits to Article Five, Order of Business, as discussed.
Do you have a second?
Second, go ahead.
Second from Echo. Okay, any further discussion?
Tidy or fine, sorry. They'll go, they'll be voted on at the next meeting to make official.
Okay, so that's all we do.
I'm still concerned with the executive, shall have the consultation, the executive director shall obtain. I believe those words are the same. I don't see the necessity for obtain, since the president of the board of trustees, part of their responsibility is to work in tandem with the executive director, and, but not, I'm worried that shall obtain is giving the executive, the president of the board of trustees too much control as a single entity over the executive director of the library. We, as a board of trustees, are to work as a unit, not as a single person giving the executive director instructions, yays or nays or whatever. We are supposed to do that as a board. So I very much, I prefer the wording that they shall have the consultation with the president of the board of trustees. I object to the words obtain an approval, because that means one person is telling the executive director what to do, not a guiding hand as a representative working in tandem. And I'm worried about crossing that line of being a five-person board versus having an echo. This is nothing against you personally, this would be for any of the presidents that I have worked with on the board of trustees. I would not want any of them to have, to be dictatorial towards the executive director. So those words concern me in that regard.
My question would be, what would be the difference of consultation with the president instead of whatever?
It's approval versus consultation. It's have the consultation versus obtain the consultation. Those are very different meetings, and they're very specifically different, and they are , so just a power that the president of the board of trustees would have, that I think the prior language allows it to be more consensual and more in working together, rather than Renee has her hands tied until she hears from the president.
So here's where it would get sticky for me, is if one of you asked for something to be on the agenda, and the president, whoever that is at the time, says, no, I don't want that on the agenda, then I'm in this place of, like, do I do what the president says or what? So here's the.
Legal.
The way for that to move forward is that we've never kept the agenda before. You can put anything on the agenda, but then the trustees can vote at the meeting to remove stuff from the agenda. So it would be, I think that this could open the door for that to be a conflict.
There's also this or designee added, president or designee of the board, that's not green there, but has been added, because before it was just, has the consultation of the president of board of trustees as needed, and usually we would just run it past them to make sure there's nothing else. But like Renee said, any individual board member can request, and we've never denied something to be added to an open meeting like that.
It's just, are we crossing the line as a board?
Well, also, who decides who the president designate? I don't know, that's a little tricky too.
I suppose it might mean the vice president, if the president is not there.
You would logically, I would think you would logically go down the order of.
That makes sense, yeah. I just didn't understand what you were trying to say.
Electoral position.
Is that what you were thinking when you added or designated there?
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Like, just the line of succession that's in the.
Well, then, if the president's out, then that happens, we've got someone else that can step up.
Yeah, gotcha.
And there's already a way to, Renee, if somebody really, really wants to have something on the agenda and the president doesn't agree, three board members can request. That's in there somewhere, right?
That's calling a meeting. I mean, like, I think the idea behind it is similar, because that would be a majority of the board, but then that goes into, like, then you have to discuss what it is and why you want it, and it just gets real muddy. So, I mean, this is a little bit muddy area as it was, but this feels more conflict-prone.
I feel totally, I totally understand having the consent agenda items earlier so we can review things that would, as with you, my life is very busy, and that would help me very much to be able to review that information ahead of time. My objection is just to the word have versus obtain and approval versus consultation, and that would be my objection to this and for the discussion on this vote.
Any other discussion before we call it off?
I don't really, again, I don't really have any strong feelings on it one way or the other. I think as a practical matter, it's going to be the same either way. Probably the way I would edit it would be, in preparing the agenda, the executive director shall consult the president of the board of trustees as needed, and that's more of a quibble with the grammar than anything else.
Yeah, shall.
I like that. Shall consult the president or designee of the board. So it would be that on that last two lines, the executive director shall jump to consult, and then go to the president or designee of the board of trustees before public. I like that very much as a compromise between the two.
And adding in or designee?
Yeah. It's on, it's on, that's on John's revision.
Okay, so just, just shall consult.
Shall consult, and then jump to the president or designee of the board of trustees publicly before they post the notice. To me, that solves, that feels more comfortable.
I think it puts it back to where it was. I think there should be a final authority on what the agenda items should be, and I think it's.
Well, I think that's the vote of, like, when you adopt the, when you open the meeting and adopt the consent agenda, you can then vote to remove anything, so like, more is better as opposed to trying to prevent things from being on there. So if there's some quibble, like, for me, I would default to just putting it on there and then letting the board decide what, as opposed to, like, adding it after the fact, because then we run into, we haven't properly noted. as opposed to like adding it after the fact, because then we run into, we haven't properly notified the public.
You could add a sentence that says, anyone, I mean, which is how we've always done it. Any, any board member can ask for something to be added to the agenda. And, and then if you wanted to put that the board of trustees has to review it before, or the president has to review it, but that would mean that at least the director wouldn't be in the position of having to figure out who to listen to.
I'm just going to keep blunt, because I don't want any other way to do this. This is really our meeting, it's the board trustees' meeting. And yes, we need your reports, but the agenda should be controlled by the board.
Right, by the board as a whole, not one person on the board.
Right, but I don't think we can have a meeting prior to the meeting to decide what goes on the agenda. That's why I think it really, the president should, should basically look at the agenda and go, yep, this is appropriate, let's do this. I, I don't think we're going to consult with every board of trustee member to decide what goes on the agenda, that's. And I don't think insulting is the right word, I think approval is the right word. But I, I, if there's no more discussion, I think we put it to a vote.
And then do we vote, again, do we vote?
You're voting on the proposed wording, basically.
Okay.
And then next month, you will.
I guess let's first, what are we voting on first?
Yes.
Let's read what we're voting on.
Try it again. The library executive director or designee shall be held responsible for preparing an agenda of business items and packet of consent agenda items, I guess is what it is.
Correct.
For each regular meeting.
Right.
And sending it to the library and board members at least seven days prior to the meeting, so there is time to review and make edits before the 24-hour notice to the public. In preparing the agenda, the executive director shall consult the president or designee of the board of trustees before publicly posting notice. Is that what we're voting on, or do you want the?
I wanted the approval.
You wanted the approval?
Well, you're making the proposal, so.
So.
Use your wording.
I would go with what, what I handed out, plus the edits. So approval of the president or designee of the board of trustees before publicly posting notice.
Okay, so that's what we're, okay.
That's the first notion.
So that's your first motion, okay, is there a second? Second from Echo, okay. Any further discussion? Trustee Gary.
Aye.
Trustee Hagan.
Nay, and to note, because the words obtain an approval, I, I have concern. I would like that noted, but the rest of the proposal is good, but I have to vote nay.
Okay, trustee Schneider.
Nay.
Did you say aye or nay?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I thought you said.
Okay.
Say it one more time.
Say it one more time.
We didn't change your vote, what is it? What's your vote?
I'm in favor.
You're in favor, okay.
In favor, aye.
All right, so that carries. Okay, next thing is, we're going to look at Article eight, scope of authority. That looks like a more extensive edit.
There's a lot of red there, sorry. Married to a journalist, so I'm a little. So let me preface this conversation with some notes that I have.
Is there a second page to this for the grade?
No, it's just one.
Just one page, okay.
Just one page.
Okay.
The bylaws as written today restrict both communication and authority of the board with regard to its working relationship with the executive director. This revision clarifies the scope of the board much closer to the statute RSMO 182 and allows for open communication to all in a productive and interactive way. We refer back to the notes from Harry Styron in an email, July 20, 2021, in that he says that Articles eight, as written, scope of authority limits the board unnecessarily. And I agree with him. I don't agree with Harry very often, but I agree with him on this one. So I would strike everything from section one down to the bottom of section four and instead add the language that comes from the statute, which outlines the board of trustees, the powers that they have according to statute. A lot of it's the same, but this enumerates the powers that we actually have, instead of handcuffing us the way we were under the old Article eight. So I'll, I'll read, I'm not going to read the omission, or the deletions, I'm just going to read the new one. The district library board of trustees is defined by state law and its bylaws, RSMO 182. The board of trustees has the following powers and responsibilities. Policy setting, the board establishes library policies, including rules for the operation and use of the library facilities and services in coordination with the executive director. Budget approval, the board approves the library's budget and oversees financial management, ensuring responsible use of public funds. Personnel management, the board hires, regularly evaluates, and may terminate the library executive director. The executive director typically manages the day-to-day operations and staff. Long-term planning, the board is involved in strategic planning to ensure the library meets community needs and adapts to changes. Compliance with laws, the board retains legal counsel to ensure that the library complies with all relevant state and federal laws. It's pretty simple, it's basically extracted straight from statute. It's kind of paraphrased, but.
I would like to take a moment to read what has been deleted.
Absolutely.
And to make sure how it's, how you have it condensed here.
I, I need some time to digest this, too. John, what section in RSMO 182, were you, were you kind of going to them generally?
Yes.
So with this, okay.
Yeah, so.
I'm in, I'm in there, and I'm, I'm trying to find.
So some of it, so 182 is huge.
And there are separate sections for like county libraries and city libraries.
There's, yeah, there's a section on the treasurer, what they're supposed to do. The general responsibilities, it, it basically doesn't, it says rules, policies, I think it says regulations, but we don't have any regulations.
I, I, my, my initial inclination is, I, I think I need time to digest this. You know, I, I would actually propose that we table this and bring it up at the next meeting, because I, I kind of want to, I kind of want to review the bylaws as a whole and review this and review the statute, and that's going to take longer than it's. You, you don't want, nobody wants to sit here and, and wait for me to do that on the fly.
Fair enough.
Because it's going to take a while.
So I'll take the action item of sending this to Dory to be distributed to.
In the packet.
Yeah, in the packet, to be discussed on the next meeting.
So is that, so is that all we've got on Article eight?
Uh, that's all.
Okay, for now.
And then we're back to.
Okay.
Is there any more discussion or anything?
Is there any further discussion on this?
Do I have to make a motion to move it, or to?
I think so, I think.
You should probably make a motion to table, yeah, to the next meeting.
I move to table it to the next meeting.
To be safe.
Further discussion, nevermind.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. All right, trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan, ah, trustee, trustee Schneider?
Aye.
Okay, that carries. All right, next thing, 2025 budget.
Okay, so you have several pieces of papers. So first I did put the updated organizational chart in with that, that is the first one that's in the packet, so. And that is posted on our website as well. And then the next, like, sort of all of this is layered in support of the, of the budget, which is what you will vote on. The updated pay scale, I gave you 2024 and 2025 pay scales, so you'd have the comparison of what changes were made. So I'll just talk through these, but just so you know, these are, this is a scale for like a starting range. So not everybody in these positions are making the bottom end of that range, actually, most of them are not. But that is kind of how we set our starting ranges for, our starting pay for our positions. So the major differences in the pay scales is I incorporated the minimum wage increase that was voted in, so that is 1375. That goes into effect January 1st. So you know that government entities are exempt from that, but it is good practice to have that, because that makes it hard to compete with hiring for our entry-level positions if we don't have what, you know, McDonald's or whoever is paying. And then, so I tried to kind of do a bump up across the board, although, like, it's not as high of a percentage the further you go, so there is a little bit of compression. But to address that, I combined, we have two categories, specialists and associate admin for this year, that the positions in those are all kind of unique. Most of those positions, or all of them, with the exception of the youth programming specialists, there's only one person that has that title, and they all have kind of different, unique jobs. And the, what we were asking for in experience or education level was pretty close, so I kind of combined those two categories and then moved the wage up for, starting wage for all of them. So that kind of helped without negatively affecting people who are in the higher category, so that's associate admin. And then I combined the clerks and assistants, because we only have like one person who is a shelver, and they've been here long enough that they're making that, in that pay range anyways. So it doesn't really impact any single person. The, the main one that, like, you guys can really decide whatever you want to do is the starting wage for the executive director, which, that doesn't change what I'm making now. This is just like, what do you want that starting wage to be? And that is somewhat comparable for libraries of our size across the state. And it is, I tried to make it far enough above that admin three that it made sense. But if you guys want to keep it as it is, or change it in any other way, that is to you. So do you have any questions about that specifically, this, the pay scale? Okay. All right, I will go, sorry, I'm going to lose my voice. Okay, then the next set of pages. I gave you the budget proposal, but with, compared to 2024 budget in the next column, and then the, what we're projected to come in at for the 2024 budget. So the, the final pieces of information are the actual proposed 2025 budget all by itself. So I just have kind of the worksheet for comparisons for you. So let me just talk through the different elements of that. It is very similar to 2024. The, looking at revenue specifically, we're projected to incorporate significantly less carryover than we budgeted. So that first-line carryover bond reimbursement is comprised of, we get a lot of our, some of our property tax money, like, in December, so that's like always a carryover. And we use unspent portion of the 2022 certificate participation that we used to build Clever and Sparta. We didn't spend all of the, what we borrowed essentially. So the unspent funds are paying down that principal each year, so there's a payment each year that is kind of made from that fund. That is what goes into that section. So we're projecting to finish 2024 with using less of that than we had budgeted, which is good, because that just adds to our reserves. But I'm budgeting similar to what we did for 2024, just to keep that fairly consistent. And hopefully, we won't need to use all of that, but it's there. The tax revenue is, is based upon the figures from the county clerk, so that's pretty standard. It, we often come in higher, and that's because of delinquent taxes, because people pay late and they have to pay more, so we get a portion of that. So we never know what that is, and we hope people don't have to pay fees.
It actually benefits us if people pay late.
It does, but I don't, like, I don't want that to happen to people, but it, it does help. So that's why we usually have more than what we budgeted, but I still kind of keep that conservative. And our overall increase is, I think, right about 3% from 2024. And that's typical for a non-assessment year. State aid, that revenue stream, so I typically don't really budget for us to get anything. We get payments in, we go by the state fiscal year, so we get half of it in one of our fiscal years and the other half in the other. So I always budget for what I know is coming, so we know in spring we're getting X amount of dollars. But I don't know yet what we'll get in the fall, so I sometimes don't budget anything for that. I did budget, I think, 25% of what we've gotten like the last three years. So it's there, hopefully, we get more than that, but I feel like that's still pretty conservative. And then grants, donations, reimbursements, this, I think we're going to end up higher than we projected because of a grant that we, well, I don't know if we'll get, the grant we just got for public, or for staff computers, we may or may not get some of that reimbursement in this fiscal year, so that may, that estimated or projected income may change. But we have, the last few years, we've gotten several technology grants, like, for public computers and stuff, but we've kind of gone through everything that we're eligible for, because they don't fund a lot of. What we need most is like for facilities and personnel, and it's really hard to get grants for that. So I'm just projecting or budgeting for us to do less in grants, and we'll probably have more smaller grants in the next year, which just takes more time in capacity to implement and to request grants. And then estimated interest income, I'm keeping conservative, even though we're projected to have almost double of what I budgeted. I just, you never know what things are going to do, so I don't want to overestimate. to do, so I don't want to overestimate that. Okay, so expenditures, any questions about the revenue piece of things? Okay, expenditures, I put the bulk of any increases into personnel, primarily to get wages up and to not just raise that minimum wage, but then to make some increases across the board. So what I've planned with that is that basically the, the lower tiers, and I don't mean lower in value, just lower in pay, will have higher increases, higher percentages of increases. So like our lowest paid people are going to see between a 10 and like 15%. So if they're eligible for a merit increase, which they have to have been here six months and have a satisfactory annual evaluation, then they're eligible for that merit increase. So they would get the cost of living, which bumps to 1375 or, or up from there, and then like a 3 to 5% upon, on top of that. And then the Associate category is kind of the same thing, I try to do by percentages as much as possible. So in those categories, like Assistant, Associate, Associate Admin, they're going to see, if they're at the bottom end of the scale, they're going to see that 10 to 15% increase. If they're already higher up in the scale, they, they're going to see more like a 6 to 8% increase. And then in the Admin categories, I tried to do like a 4.8 to 5% increase. There's not really a cost of living increase because most of them are already above the base of their scale, so I just tried to build, build in a healthy, so we could consider it at like a 3% cost of living and then a 2% performance-based increase. So, and that's, that part is dependent upon satisfactory evaluations. So that is what is driving the increase in personnel costs. And really, the only way we were able to do this is we had a couple of structural changes to some staffing positions. We had, we filled a Collection Services Manager position internally, and so that person's position, we eliminated the full-time position and created two part-time supporting positions. And then when our Outreach Manager left, we kind of reclassified that position. It was something that had kind of needed to be done for a little while. So that actually freed up a little bit of the personnel budget to be able to get these cost of living increases across the board as well as still stay within a reasonable amount for our budget. The Personnel piece accounts for like 58 or 59% of the budget as a whole, which is a kind of best practice for libraries. That is what most libraries try to keep in that 55 to 60% percentage of their budget goes to personnel. Okay, so that's salaries. As far as other items in the Personnel category specifically, I budgeted for a 10% increase in health insurance premiums, we saw about that this year. Payroll expenses, you'll see a big decrease because we moved to new software in January and, so we're paying for the software separately from the payroll expenses, so that software was moved to the IT budget. And so it's not that we're, we are, it is less than our previous software and setup, but it's not that much less. We just split up the categories, one is software and one is payroll expenses. Okay, and then the other things are pretty standard, workers' comp, we just get told what our cost is, like insurance basically each year. So it decreased from 2023, so we're coming in under budget for 2024, so we already know, I believe, what our 2025 costs are expected to be, which is why that's less than last year.
And is that dependent on how many, does that rate get set depending on what claims you get? So nobody gets hurt on the job and the rates are lower?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Which is a good incentive to have good safety practices.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and we've done a good job. Honestly, like, I think, I don't think we've had any in the last two years.
We haven't had any, we haven't any on our records since 2019.
So, yeah, now we've just jinxed ourselves, but someone gets hurt tomorrow.
Somebody's going to slip and fall now.
Yeah.
But it can also change based on position, so if more people drive library vehicles, it will go up slightly, but nothing like an accident.
Okay, any questions about Personnel category?
Are you going to talk about the org chart?
Oh, I, I can, let's go back to that, sorry. This is not wildly different from our previous one, but if you haven't seen our previous one, anybody know that. Do you have questions about it?
Yeah, I was really hoping for something more that gave the names in the titles so that I could kind of figure out, how many people do we have? This is hugely helpful, I'm grateful for that. This is more of a functional, so what I'm looking for is, so how, the names of the people that are in these titles, and this, it may be too much of an eye chart to do it on one sheet, but if you, on one sheet had broken down Executive Director, Director of IT and Facilities, and all of the people that report to the Director of IT and Facilities, their names and what titles they're in, and if those map to these pay scales, then we can, you know, we can basically understand who's in what job title.
Yeah, so you just want the names of staff?
The names of staff in that job title, so that I can map them back to this.
Okay.
It's just a regular org chart, what the title is, who they report to and what their name is.
No, I understand, most org charts I've seen don't have the specific titles, they just have the positions, but I think, I mean, specific names of people. A lot of these change, you know, throughout, especially Library Assistants and Associates people, you know, we have turnover, so I'm going to give it to you and then, you know, three months from now, there will be a couple of names out of date, so.
How many, how many days to get it? How long will it take to get the names of people under the titles?
I mean, I can, I can send it to you this month, I, but-
Okay.
So is, is it something to be sent to?
I can just send it to the board, I-
Is, is that acceptable to do that?
Yeah, just send it to us direct and we don't have to wait till the next meeting.
Okay.
And it doesn't have to be, you know, this is graphically cool to look at, but if it's just, here's the title, here's the names under that title, that's really all, I don't, I don't need that topic.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions about the org chart or personnel so far?
No.
Okay. All right, next section of expenditures is the Collection, so I'm keeping this pretty similar. The, really, the only juggling within it is we're trying to put more money into digital and while still balancing physical, so we're, I put like a little bit more money than we budgeted, but we're overspent a little bit in that category because of digital this year, so that's just the increasing demand of things. We want to still try to strike a balance. And we're doing a couple of things, looking at a couple of things to maybe add a, another digital audiobook platform and tweak our Hoopla limits a little bit to try to maintain Hoopla, but add some other options for people who can't get their Hoopla titles because we've done our allotment for the day or the month. Any questions about Collection? Okay. And then operating expenses is the rest, the bulk of this category is our bond payments, which that's three different, two Certificates of Participation and one Lease Purchase. And two of those will be paid off at the end of 2026, is that right? Yes, so we have two years. So right now, like, I, I put a little bit more in Buildings and Grounds for this year, but once we get those two things paid off in 2026, that will free up a little bit of money for operating expenses, which will be nice and things won't be quite so tight. So Buildings and Grounds, I increased and I'll talk about specifically the things. We always leave a bucket of money for repairs as things come up, you know, small things here and there, break or need fixing, but the, our services, this, the services include like our landscaping, our snow removal, our janitorial services, also our annual inspections. We have a couple of systems at the Nixa branch, there's a sprinkler system and a fire suppression system that came with the, the building that we had to add. There's a hydrostatic testing, I didn't know that you have to do every two years, so we've learned about that and there's costs for each of those, so we've built that into the budget. And then because the HVAC is original to the building, so it's like 16 years old, maybe, I can't remember, he would knock the top of his head. So we've had an issue with one of the units this year, we were able to repair instead of replace, but Gold Mechanical who has done the servicing, and they did the servicing for the thing, so they have a service, a maintenance plan for, I think it's $5,000 a year. Well, they'll twice a year come and do cleaning and inspection and like replace some basic things, do the filters, and then if something breaks, they give us a discount on prices, so that seems like a good stopgap for now to hopefully keep things running more smoothly. The other facilities, we can maintain the, the filters and everything ourselves in their newer units, so this is the one we're concerned about, like things breaking and needing to replace a unit at, you know, eight or $10,000. So that is planned for, that is included in this. And then some repairs that we know, like, might be a little bit bigger or we're, you know, trying to plan for is that external wall at the Ozark branch has some rusting because it's a metal building and there's some leak, leaking underneath. So he has been working, has consulted a couple of companies at, to see what kind of repairs we can make, and so he's estimated, I think about $20,000 for that, give or take, to address that so that we don't have ongoing water issues. Some tree removal or trimming at Ozark and then the facade, the brick facade of the building because water has gotten in, some of the bricks are like flaking off. So he has a plan for, it's going to be mostly manual labor of kind of scraping and redoing some of that, but some costs for supplies and then it will be mostly time to repair those. And then just some other minor repairs at Ozark and Nixa. So I, I put a note, like, we, like, we need to plan for some bigger capital improvements, like the HVAC in Nixa, potentially the roof in Ozark, although the repair, knock on wood, seems to be doing good right now. And then we need to receive, repair, reseal and re-strive the parking lot here at Nixa. I don't think we're going to be able to do that this year in the budget unless we were to find a grant or something for that. But ideally for next year, or for 2026, we can plan for that. We might want to try to do some patch jobs of just a couple of places so they don't get worse, but not a whole, I think the whole redoing the lot is going to be in the $15,000 to $20,000 range, so those are just things I'm thinking of for the coming years, especially once we get that bond payment category down lower, we'll have, that'll free up a little bit. We do have money in reserve, if something major happens, if three HVAC units go out, that would be me coming to you to say, can we dip into reserve and amend the budget to do these, but hopefully that won't be necessary for 2025. Then the next category with a little bit of difference is IT, and that is where some of our, often our grants come out of, so I've lowered it for this year because we, the grant we just got will be expending the money in this year's budget, so I don't expect to expend as much next year. So not expecting large grants. Our small projects that we're looking at is potentially an upgrade to the Ozark Camera Security System and some website accessibility improvements. Something that the IT manager wants to try to do would be to upgrade our Badge Access Management System, but I don't think we can do it for this year. We have two different systems in the branches, so there's one system at Sparta and Clever and then a separate one here. So it's just a lot of time and maintenance for the IT staff when we get new staff to, they have to like physically go to Ozark and update the Badge Access. And so it would be better streamlined for safety and security if they were all on the same system, but that'll probably be a bigger ticket item, so maybe we can do that in 2026. Okay, let's see, memberships, that has like our Chamber memberships, Johnny Christian County, Professional Organization memberships for, that we pay for people who are going to conferences in order to get a discounted rate. I'm not planning to do as much conference attendance this year, so that is lower specifically because of that. Professional Services, we tried to recategorize some things for this year because we had some that were in Buildings and Grounds that should have been in Professional Services and vice versa, so Mary and I are still working on the final categorization of some things. So that may not be quite as over budget as we were expecting, but I did budget an increase for 2025, and some of that is attorney fees because we expect that to be an increase over what Harry's costs were. And the pre-designed costs for SAP, which we may get a grant from the foundation for, but we still need to budget to expend it in this category. The Programming Program Supplies, I kept pretty similar, we did, oh, the Programming Supplies, we went over budget, but we did get a grant to compensate, so something that was unexpected. So stayed within budget for our typical things. Staff and Board Travel, that's significantly less than this year. We had an employee who was working remotely and would come in once a week or every other week that we were paying mileage for and they're no longer working remotely, so that was a big chunk that we don't have to pay for and then reduced conference attendance. And then training is a little bit less because of reduced conference attendance, so we'll try to do some local and online training, that also includes our staff day costs. Okay, so that, those are kind of the highlights of what's different. Questions about all that? Okay, is she still there?
You still there, Erica?
I am, yeah.
Okay, good.
Did you get all that?
I did, yeah.
Okay, good.
Reading along.
Good, good. Okay.
So, is this just for discussion or do we vote to approve it?
You vote to approve it, preferably.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the budget?
I need time to look at it, I'm so sorry, I just need more time to look at it.
Okay, do we want to, somebody want to make a motion to table it to the next meeting?
Is that something that can be done?
You can, it is like, it is much easier if we have it in place now, especially for, for staff. Are there specific things you have concerns about or questions about? We do try to adopt it in November for planning purposes.
I just, I, some of the things I had questions about, like for example, you, in the collections you have hotspots.
Yes.
Hotspots are more of a utility and operating, they are part of a collection.
Yeah, so we've had it in two different places. The reason we have it categorized in Collection right now is because it is checked out by the patrons. We circulate hotspots for them to check out, so that's why we have it in there. We used to have it in IT, but we moved it to Collection for that because it is something that people check out.
So what happens if we don't approve it today?
It doesn't give us good time to prepare for January 1st, honestly, and what we're doing with wage increases, because, you know, staff want to know now if they're getting raises and what those are. Planning for Collection buying, because we get things in place, we do pre-orders and things like that. Facilities planning, I mean, it's not going to be the end of the world, but it's not ideal. And it can be amended, so if you vote to adopt it now and there are things that, I mean, that would be tricky too, but like I would kind of need to know what things you want to come along and change later, but-
So the projections, look- So projections, the budget projections look good compared to last year's budget projections. There has been some cost saving.
Yep.
And I, and again, as you said, some for grants, but some for varied situations. I'm always glad to see the budget projection go down a little bit to make sure we're spending wisely.
Staff have worked really hard to get it to this point in the last few years. When I came on, I'm in Janice, you'll remember this, we were operating, spending more than we were bringing in.
Way.
Because we had had a reserve built up, kind of, to open the branches and see what it's going to take to operate. So my goal had been by the end of 2024 to be operating within only revenues, and we met that by the end of 2023, if you'll recall from the audit.
And that's what I'm noticing now. I appreciate the fine tuning that's.
Yeah. And that's staff, you know, being frugal and paying careful attention and, you know, making cuts, where I've asked them to make cuts, and Mary doing a really good job of doing, you know, projections and helping us make sure we're on track throughout the year.
And John, I wonder if this would be a good time, it's a trigger position, to set up the time with Mary and Renee to go through some of the questions in more detail as well. I know, because I took on the position, I had a lot of questions before that, so I wondered that might, for a while. Have you approved the budget as, as presented, and then you, in addition, you know, we're going to use their ramp up there?
Okay.
Any other questions?
That's fine. So we're going to approve, but set up a meeting, because I, I kind of have to onboard as treasurer.
Yes. Okay.
So we've got a motion to approve?
I would, I would motion that the budget is approved as presented, and that meeting is to be set up between the treasurer and the finance officer. I'm sorry, Mary, I don't know your exact title.
Director.
Director finances.
Yep.
And the executive director to review, to review the budget. Does that obey the motion?
So approve the budget and pay scale, do you want to put both? Oh, yeah. I mean, it's. Which feeds the budget, so. Right, but we usually said both, just to be clear.
Add that, please.
What she said.
What she said.
Second.
Okay. All right. Any further discussions?
No.
Okay. Trusty Garrity?
Hi.
Trusty Hayden?
Hi.
Trusty Schneider?
Hi.
All right, carries.
Thank you.
And then I guess that comes to the end of the agenda, do we, I should know this, but I don't.
You're just adjourned, you can just say adjourned.
I just, okay, me and John.
You did it.
I didn't know if we had.
You did a great job.